With the Conservation Commission and then Wetlands Agency, September 30, 2025 at 7:00 P. M. I am Dabney Bowen, Vice Chair, acting as the chairman this morning, uh, this evening. And we have Kate Bohm Mahoney, and Peter Hood, and Jay Fane, and Ted Lipsinger, and Heather Rosenthal, and Salvador Vasallo, and, and who else? Diane Saunders, I can't see that far.
Talk about cataracts.
Yeah, right. All right, let's stand for the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to this republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. We have a quorum, so we don't need any alternates.
Yes.
Four, five, six, oh.
Anytime you have less than seven to vote, you need someone.
Thought we had seven, one, two, three, four, five, six.
Rick's not here, can't have seven.
Oh, Sal, sorry, I was, I was, I was counting Sal. Okay, so let's appoint Sal tonight, um, as a full member, okay?
Me too.
So it really would help if I could see that. Okay. The draft meeting minutes from last meeting of August 6, 2025, do I have a motion to approve? Anybody yet mentioned that?
Second.
Second. Diane? So, approve. All right, on to our public hearing, WP 250107, Rizio 204 Post Road, map 243, structural 16, demolition of existing structure, structures on construction of eight longhouse units grouped in four buildings with associated driveway parking areas and other improvements within a regulated area. Decision may be made if the hearing is completed or the hearing may be continued. Three hundred thirty-five day of public hearing timeframe to complete the hearing ends on October 8, 2025. An additional sixty-five day time extension may be provided by the applicant, so further public hearing continuations to December 12, 2025 are possible. Potential continuation date is October 8, 2025. If the hearing is completed, the agency will make a decision within thirty-five days. Hello?
My name is Raymond Rizio, I have an office at 10 Saskatoon Road, Fairfield, Connecticut. And I'm here as both an attorney and, uh, the applicant. And, uh, this is a property, if you know, 204 Old Post Road, it's right next, sits between the Sasquatch Park and the Equinox. Uh, site currently has, uh, a commercial repair garage, two apartments, two houses, and another residential garage. Um, we, I've been in touch with the set, the owners of the property, and they had had a bunch of offers for, you know, higher density zoning, trying to do something where gang break unite, and I just thought that this could be such a better project if we kind of kept it low density, had it match up with the kind of look that, uh, you see across at Southport Green, uh, we hired Jack Francine to design it, Huntington Company and Bill Kenny to work with us on bringing this really a high quality project to a very visible area, and a, and a, and a site that has really been underutilized. And in some instances, it's, it's, it's in a commercial zone, but it really is, it's kind of mixed use, but it's not a great mixed use. It doesn't really bring anything to the street. It is in an awkward position where, with the Equinox right next door. So, rather than trying to build some kind of apartment building or anything else, we thought going with eight townhouses, two attached, so four buildings, would be the best way to approach this. It'd be something that the community, as you can see, I'm not used to being in an empty room before a public hearing, but we reached out to the neighboring property owners, uh, no one's had any objection, in fact, they think it's all a great improvement site. After doing that, we met with the staff, uh, you know, Sarah, since we're ready, she sat down. One of the things they have, I don't know if you have, our first, our first plan had basically a twenty-four foot wide driveway. It got within twelve feet of the property line of the park, um. Staff suggested that we reduce the size of the road from twenty-four to twenty feet, pull the prop, pull the buildings further away from the, from the site, uh, from the, from the park, and we did that so that we could get it uniformly, at least twenty feet away from the park at all times. It's an unusual property because it really has two fronts. It has the, which most people don't realize, it actually sits on the post road also. Um, and to heavily landscape that area is it's not exactly the best look as you come into Fairfield. Um, and then we plan on doing a really nice job on the front on the old post road. So it'll more be, that'll be a rear yard, that'll be well established, well grounded. It's, it's, in fact, the current buildings sit over the property line on the state property. So we'll be clearing all that out. We've already gone to the ZB, whatever waivers we need, and we'll be able to basically turn on all the buildings. There's currently no drainage on the site, there's no, no leaders, there's no cutters, there, it's just water flowing wherever it can go. And with a vast amount of impervious, as you can see from basically, it's like a huge parking lot all the way back, with no, with no kind of, uh, any, any, any structures to protect anything from the, from the pavement going into the, into, there's a, well, we've talked about, there's a little, it's not a pond, it's a depression that has some water. Uh, staff has confirmed it's, it's not a vernal pool, although it's, it may have some critters. One of the things we talked about was putting a, a better fence along the lines, and it's funny, you, in talking about placing the fence, we talked about, you know, you always talk, when you have a park, you want the, the animals to go back and forth, but unless these animals are getting on ninety-five, working out at the Equinox, or are going to eat at the Grey Goose, there's nowhere for them to go. So one of the good things about putting a fence here, I think we, we better protect the wildlife from basically getting run over, because there's really nowhere to go, once you go, let's call it north of the site. It's, it's pavement, it's ninety-five, uh, you'd have to, for any animal to get to woods going to the north, you'd have to go across the Equinox, across the Grey Goose, go under the underpass, go across the post road, and manage to get into woods behind the other side of the, uh, on the other post road. So, we feel that we can really clean this site up, make it very attractive. Um, I know you really don't care about elevations, um, but I just want to give you a look at what our concept is. Um, which is basically, uh, really nice design, colonial structures, in keeping, parking, two-car parking within, within the garages. Each part, each one will have its own two-car garage. We talked with staff, originally we had patios off the back, staff suggested that we would get to that, is add, instead add decks, which is really more where the living space is, and we, we, we've accomplished that.
So there again?
Because I was gonna say that on this, the post stone terraces, but we don't, we don't have that planned.
What's that?
We don't have that revision yet, right?
Uh, we just sent over vision today.
Because I was gonna ask you whether, um, instead of having, um, this post stone terraces may be impervious, but you're gonna do deck instead with some kind of infiltration?
Yes, with infiltration below. So we had, we had the discussion with staff, we, one thing we spent a good amount of time with staff, actually, I was there twice. Uh, we've, as you'll read in their recommendations, we've accepted most of, almost all of the, all of, all of what they've suggested. Um, I think in the end, we're gonna get a better project, the project's really in keeping with that area south port, a project that will get rid of non-conform nuances. But a project that'll bring a, um, the proper handling of and treatment of the park next door, and it, uh, was the drainage that's, that's currently being on site, and, uh, as you can see, Mr. Kenny is having to spend a lot of money on landscaping, as you'll see, it's a very abundant plan. But I'm gonna turn it over to Bill, I just wanted to introduce you, tell you how, how kind of we got here.
What did you mean, you, you accepted most of the changes staff recommended, what, what did you not accept?
I don't know that we didn't accept any, but I don't, I don't, I don't want to say with certainty, yeah, I'm just, that's my lawyer hat. Um, I, I think we went, everything we went through with staff is pretty much.
A second ago, you said, we, you accepted most of what they asked it for.
I'm just, I, I don't recall anything we didn't, but I didn't want to say what was certainty, because I looked, I was looking at the plan from a meeting, and I thought we incorporated almost every one of their changes. And I can't, I, I won't want to say a hundred percent, but I would say.
I'm curious what you didn't accept. That's, I think that's, you don't think it's a legitimate question, that's fine, I'm just curious.
Now you said you accepted almost everything, I'm just trying to understand what you did.
It's something you can't recall.
Can't recall.
Okay, that's an answer, I just.
In my mind, in my mind, we incorporated all the changes they, they requested.
Right.
Um, we had a meeting that went on for a while, um, and I think your staff, I think when, when you look through the staff report, it'll say that we, we basically incorporated the changes that they suggested.
Great. Does anybody else have any questions?
I have some, but I know Bill wants to do his, um, presentation first.
Not a version of that presentation, feedback.
I, I had some, some questions and some comments.
Okay.
Um, just first of all, in terms of alternatives, did you guys consider flipping the whole thing around so that driveway was on the other side and the, um, drawings were on towards Equinox?
We looked, we, we looked at that, we thought it was best to bring the road and the, it's a very unique site, it's, it's three hundred and fifty feet long, it's a hundred and something feet wide, and we thought, get as much impervious away from the park as we could, where you have it basically impervious matching up with what you have against, against Equinox.
I guess that brings me to my next question, um, did you consider instead of doing a asphalt driveway, impervious driveway instead of the coltex? Would you consider doing that? Porus, uh, you know, some pavers or some kind of porous, um.
Perfect, yes.
We, we, what we tried to do was meet all range requirements that required by this.
I think it's, we're trying to head in that direction, it's, you know, you make the requirements, but the pervious favor is a softer way, you know, probably a superior way to do it, um, probably will be a wash in terms of cost, because the coltex are expensive. Um, and, and again, that, you know, that's kind of the direction as the commission, we're trying to head. Um, at least, um, consider that, or at least to consider a portion of it as pervious, and, you know, I know it's, I'm bringing it up right now, it's a new thing, but I think it would be a, uh, especially with what you're trying to do with the feeding the wetland, and Bill recommended raising some of the coltex and changing the hydrology. Um.
And it's something that we, that we as a commission ask of, pretty much everyone that comes to us that has a decent amount of asphalt pavement. Um, to, this goes above and beyond the state department, so.
Yeah, it's just a, you know, a better approach.
Filtration, et cetera.
Um, so I, I didn't get a chance, I, I, you, I mentioned about the patios, okay, so they're gonna be decks, which is fine. Um, I don't have your updated planting plans, I really can't comment on it. One of the things I would like to see, um, is on the rear, you know, where you have, uh, grass growing right, right up to the, the buildings, having some planting beds of natives plants, so.
Yeah, I could, can, I could share my screen.
Uh, yeah, I'm just figuring it out, maybe the, I'm blind.
That was from today, so.
Yeah, I just can't, well, uh, so that was another thing, you would also mention on here lawn or other ornamental vegetation, I think some lawn is appropriate, especially it's, um, a small development, but I'd like to see is, you know, as minimal as possible, Bill. Um. Um. And the, the other thing, the splint, yeah, I thought, I looked at your plants, they all seem to be appropriate, I think it's a good planting, um, palette. Um, but again, you know, I haven't seen the latest plan there, so I can't really comment a hundred percent on that. And then, um, just in terms of lighting, maybe just go over that, um, we'd like to try to extinguish as much lighting at the property line as possible, so you let, while your light should have cutoffs on them.
Yeah, one of the things that will help, it's glad that you bring that up. We will do, it will do a lot of good to have these buildings to shade, if you've ever been at the Equinox at night.
You please buy them some blinds.
This will act as a little buffer for the park, uh, against the lighting of the Equinox, the Equinox, that whole third floor, in fact, I'm gonna try, try and talk to them about putting some kind of, uh, uh, because there's no one to attract, I think they use it as a marketing tool.
Yeah.
You know, but you're not, they're, they're not gonna see anybody there, so I'm gonna talk to the Equinox about doing some kind of, uh, tinting of the windows on that side.
About side lighting coming out or extra.
List of studies talking about the damage that.
Then, um.
Well, I think our buildings will do, help, help protect that.
Question for staff, I remember any, you know, not many, probably ten years ago, there was some development closed in this area, and I think somebody did a study about this being a vernal pool, I think some vernal pool species was identified, I want, no?
No, we checked with staff, Tim's been out there a couple times.
I, I, you know, I just wanted to clarify, because I, I do remember something in this area.
I, I feel like that was the, the brick building on the other side of the park, when we were building that, and that was about ten years ago.
Yeah, so anyways, anyways, I, I think that, um, just get on board here, I'm not, I'm not opposed, I think it's appropriate use for this, I just had, those are the comments I had, any of those that you could integrate into this, I think would be, you know, just help.
The town does have ordinance against light spillage, maybe you should, it really is, it's focused on exterior lighting. It is there, maybe it's some.
Equinox is its interior lighting.
Sure there, I don't really know.
I don't control that, but I am gonna talk to them, just one of the things that concern me when talking about developing the project, in fact, most of our living area.
Yeah, that was.
Basing.
Is going for the front.
That was the other thing I was gonna say, I think you, a thousand or eleven hundred square feet of pervious over what was existing, so you, we're gonna at least integrate some pervious paper and so get it balanced, what was there.
We have no objection to that.
I think you would. Thank you.
Bill, would you like to?
Sure, I can, um, quickly your presentation, just if people are not familiar with the location, see it here, with ninety-five to the left, and it's Route One immediately to the north, you see Equinox, Southport Park. And just, uh, for the record, Bill Kenny, wetland scientist, soil scientist and landscape architect. We did investigate the property to see if there are wetlands on the property, we found no wetlands on the property, but there is this wetland immediately adjacent to the property. Um, east, north is to the top of the page here, south is to the bottom, Old Post Road is on the bottom, and Route One is at the top. And, uh, you have the forest of Southport Park to the right, and Equinox to the left. Uh, big one tree on this property. Yes, once, there's a, one, on the, you know, central portion of the property, a lot of Norway maples along the western boundary, Equinox, and some other Norway maples and other trees, uh, along the eastern boundary with the park. Certainly that wetland, the shape of it and the, oh, um, the water balance, the hydrology of that area. If it had a sufficient force surrounding it and on all sides, it, I would expect that that would support vernal pool species, but with the lack of adequate force, particularly on this site and everything to the west, it, uh, does not appear to support breeding or development of vernal species. That's what our observations were as well. Um, and there is a fair amount of the property that does drain down into this wetland, so when we were, we were considering that carefully, and, uh, we did make a recommendation to, um, the Huntington Company to modify their drainage to allow for, uh, more water to make it back to the wetland. Although they're doing a lot of wonderful things to detain it and to clean it, um, I was concerned that it would divert some of, too much of the water away, so, um, Mike Buterla, the special engineer from Huntington Company, he is online and available, that perhaps he'll, uh, he should, he should speak a little bit when I finish about his drainage design. He, he has some changes in, in, to the drawing, to his drainage design. There is a, I'll say, with the desire, with the regulation for the ten to two, uh, guidelines that you have or requirements that you have, it starts to affect how much water you can get back to, to this wetland. If you comply with one, it's hard to comply, to meet the goal of the other. And you might recall, there's two other properties just nearby where we were involved with, and we ran into the same thing, one is the old hairdresser property just down the road on Old Post Road.
Yep.
We had the same thing there, where we ended up not achieving the ten to two, because we thought it was better, and you agreed, uh, for all the other benefits. And then on, at two fifty, I think it's two fifty Pequot, around the corner, uh, that same thing happened. So in this neighborhood, uh, with the redevelopment of existing developed properties, achieving that ten to two is really difficult when you have a lot of existing, uh, impervious surface. So Mike can answer more, can answer questions regarding that. This is Mike's drawing with the units, parking to the left, parking and drives to the left. Um. Ray mentioned an alternative that was considered, where the units were closer to the property line on the east, and there was additional impervious surface. This drawing on the left reflects that earlier version, early, and after meeting with staff, this, this was scaled back and, and what you have, uh, what was submitted to you is the drawing in the middle, and then.
I can also speak about the alternatives, couple people, you know, I'm familiar with the property, some of the other folks that were trying to consider were people putting, you know, apartments above, you know, staggered buildings under, with parking underneath, kind of a, um, a podium type building for units, we just thought that splitting them apart, getting more lawn, getting, getting more, getting the business of that. And reducing the density was, was a much better use of this property, and, and, and as you can see with nobody here, we've talked to all the neighbors, and everybody seems to think this is a significant upgrade.
Lawn is a bad word in this room.
What's that?
Lawn is a bad word in this room.
Should be replaced with sedge.
But yes.
Green, but you understand, try to bring up the problem. Uh, the drawing on the left then is what was submitted to you, and there is, uh, in the back, the original design, there were drains in the back, and water was gonna be collected from the back and routed to the front, to the infiltration chambers. So Mike has revised that to eliminate those drains in the back and create narrow rain gardens, so that the water will drain, that's what is, uh, from the vegetated areas. And then it can make its way towards the wetlands. Like filtration.
Do we have that drawing or that?
Uh, that is, uh, it was submitted, and that's the drawing I have on the screen. So we've, yes, can I ask you, why was that submitted?
Why is there why it was submitted for that?
I'm just saying, you have an eight-day rule, and I don't do day of, this, I don't look at them, I can't see them, I don't access. So if you were gonna ask me to vote tonight, I would be saying, no, I can't absorb it and do it. So I'm just asking, that's, that's not a new rule. I'm just telling you, I'm sorry, but there, for me, there's always something, there's always somebody who can't get something done. The, you know, the so-and-so is busy, the pan is busy, always something, so, yeah, I'm not, I don't speak for myself, but I don't care.
Okay, but it's okay, because we're, we're ourself time, Bill was got it.
So I'm only speaking for myself.
Mike, I'm just, we did the best we could to get material before.
Needs need to be out there, because we've done this several times, you know, the meetings are public, and it's frustrating.
It looks like the, um, plans that we have are the former ones, though. With the change in that. With the change in that.
Alright, so here is the. And then today. Uh this, this is the updated planting plan where we've expanded substantially the amount, we've reduced substantially the amount of lawn. Between the buildings and the park and the forest to the right and the wetland to the right, and we've. Added a substantial amount of native grasses, perennials, shrubs. And they cover all that rain garden area and, and beyond, so we've left relatively small areas for the, for the residents to have some, some lawn area. But we've expanded the buffer planting of native plantings. Um full length and otherwise. And.
Right now, there's nothing there except the, you know, a ratty chain link fence.
And Bill, is the idea to have a sort of um. Sort of uh flow into the park, is the idea to sort of create that natural continuation onto the park?
So this will be pretty much a, a flat swale.
Okay.
Along the whole back, so the water will drain and then have an opportunity infiltrate into the ground and then move laterally towards.
He's at side where the chain link fence is, is a depression in the park. Like, you know, so it will come from there and then go.
It's just like right now.
Right into that depression.
I have a comment, a question, I guess, about the planting plant, and I um, when I was reviewing. Plan originally, I was like, I wish they would bring this all the way up to slow that down, so he did that, so that was good, um. My one, I guess, request in all this is looks like in the northern portion of, right, the, the. Post road side, um it looks like it's just gonna be a, a wall of arbitery, I wonder if we can maybe. Bury that a little bit for some interest, like, you know, obviously.
Issues there is just, it's so exposed to the post roads, so we're trying to get some.
Sure, we. Like, there's definitely some large evergreens that we.
No problem.
And that's actually a comment that I was going to make, uh because Bill shows that you put too many, too close, like a specific line, every other one is gonna die anyway. And so you'll be spending more money to, you know, to do that anyway, so if, if some blue spruces or some other, you know, were sort of staggered in there, that looks great.
And actually, the holly are great for um pollution filter, yeah, so.
No problem, American.
Help your resi, you know.
Happy to have that as.
Everybody's also a bad word. And it was, it really is.
And that was a staff recommendation. To take half, to at least eliminate half of those arbitery, replace with the native.
We have no prob, we, Phil and I reviewed all the staff recommendations and we, we, there's not one thing of a problem, except all, all their conditions.
So I would like to comment that, A, I'm very happy to see you redeveloping. A property that had already been developed, as opposed to going into virgin territory and building out there, so thank you for that. Um I think it's about the only thing you could shoehorn into that piece of property uh is what you've put together. Um and I appreciate the planting plan and the additions that have been made, uh my only request would be. Um controlling allen, artificial light at night, so the. Back of these units with the deck is overlooking the water course. They're probably gonna have spotlights above each of those units aiming out. Into the wilderness, I would like to make sure that they are, A, all pointed down. That they are twenty-seven hundred Kelvin to three thousand Kelvin in their um in intensity. And ideally, they should be on motion detectors, so that they only turn on when there's something moving in the, and so we wanna minimize the amount of. Artificial light at night in the open space and the, and, and if you can make that part of the process of um building out the lighting plan, I would really appreciate that.
Have that as a condition of approval, as I said previously, one of the, one of the challenges for me was, and I think this does help, is, this will help. Block the light that's currently coming out from Equinox.
Agreed.
So Ted, are you, are you making that a condition?
Uh it's a request.
Well, but I think it's already in the conditions of approval.
We have no problem with.
Well, it says, that's management practices, so that goes into best management practices, minimizing allen.
You wanna formalize it, I think that's good.
We're comfortable with it.
Yeah, okay, and you, you, you mentioned dark sky approval.
Dark sky compliant.
Fine, yeah, everything, um I would just, I guess I would add um either dimmers or um motion detectors. On any spots that are aiming out towards the open state there.
Typically, the spots would be security, uh the corners of the buildings, that wouldn't be you, you know, they would. So any emergency, the lighting for the ambient lighting for the use would be like a light next to the door on the patio. And those should have the cutoffs and the other ones, yeah, they shouldn't only be using them.
To give you a little feel for that, that the entrances are also from the sides, from, so that we, what we did was we created courtyards in between the units, so your entrances will be from the side, so.
Shielded, the lighting.
It'll be shielded down, yes.
Perfect.
I love that, by the way.
I like it, very nice.
That's a nice design feature, that's right.
Nice touch. Uh Bill, I have a question, um there were a lot of old cars, if I believe, is, is that right, the history of that property, what they're? I want to say that I saw like a bunch of like old cars that just sat back there for a long.
I think they've gotten rid of most of it, once the, the, the repair shop leases up, they're gone, and then that's when they're allowed to sell it, so.
Was there any contamination in the soil that you know of?
Environmental testing, got no issues.
Great question. You're lucky.
Yeah.
Nice.
Oil tanks.
I think most of the work was done inside anyway, solid concrete, they just cleaned it up.
Any other comments or questions?
Peter, how do you feel about closing the public here and you wanna keep it open, look at the planning plan?
No, I would support. Uh, it seems to me what I've, it, it seems to me your position seems to be talking that you're improving. The water supply to the wetlands.
Hundred percent. I think it's right now, there is, there's, you got, you had a gas, you had a, a gas station, but.
There was a drainage on the.
There's like a station with no drainage, no.
There's like a gully on the property that just takes every bit of garbage and, see, my thing is salt, I don't want salt going in there from. That gets used in the winter, and that's what's happening now, it's terrible.
One of the, another one of the benefits of moving the driveway as far away from that park as possible, throw it on the other side.
I like that idea a lot, yeah.
Alright, and just for reference for those who are listening, um the new planting plan is available on the website for everyone to reference. If there is no one in the room, I will not ask if there's anyone in the room that wants, on the gallery that wants to comment, is there anyone online? That would like to comment during this public hearing? Anyone? Okay. Motion to close the public hearing?
Go move.
Second?
Second.
One hearing is closed.
Thank you very much.
Gentlemen. Yeah, let's discuss. Uh was there anything you wanted to include from, that isn't in your. Recognition?
No, I think it was all discussed, uh for the record, like we know the uh planting plan was submitted. This afternoon uh with revisions, um not strictly just planting revisions, um but. Like Mr. Kenny said, also um they uh he had worked out. To reduce additional impervious surface by um switching the patios to decks. Also less ground disturbance, arguably with just a couple of square meters.
Yes.
Um, you know, something more impervious. Um, that's all on there that I circulated to the agency um when, as soon as I got it. Um but that's been discussed already tonight, everything else is, I think, the um stamp record is big comprehensive. Or uh for comments and, and analysis of the application. Um and uh, yeah, I, I think it's well done, again, you know, redeveloping in the existing developed site for me is. Uh much more uh efficient and less environmentally strenuous than, you know, clearing forests to. To do the same thing, so I think this is a, a good, a well, um well prepared and well uh executed application. Balance the um pre-impulse impervious areas by changing the, that's the patio self protect, you know? I don't know what the net. I'll call it net loss was, maybe Bill or um.
Can't really ask.
You know, from, but. Oh, yeah, but, yeah, it's like that, that's now changed.
Hmm.
Um and also uh for the record, um like I pointed out in here, um I personally waited in this pool uh on a weekly basis for the last two. Breeding seasons and found zero biological activity, so. Um I think for all the reasons we know that are obvious, um that I pointed out here and Mr. Kenny pointed out as well. Um it, it physically meets the, the definition of frontal pool, but I think it's just um sterile because there's just physically no access. Unless, you know, the obligate species are getting there in the middle of the night with no cars from. Somewhere, then they just can't get.
They're hopping across the post road.
Yeah, I mean, wood frogs, spotted salamanders are. Just, it's just not happening, so um. You know, we, I would also say we had staff or the department had. Um productive collaboration with the applicant, which I think is obvious tonight, um and I think it's just a better project. Um now than what, what came in, which wasn't bad to begin with either, but um I, I think we got. Uh made a lot of progress, so that's, those are my comments.
Sounds like this was the sort of model process that we're going.
Yeah, that's, I mean, always encouraging the concept review because it, you know, the application that hits your inbox is better than.
Right.
Than the one that would have came in, like other applicants that don't talk about, yeah, you know, their project with us beforehand, so. Uh motion then um that we approve um plan for the two oh four proposal. Uh enclave itself for um and include a couple of conditions, one um that the. Uh may have already been achieved, but that we balance the pre-impost uh. Impervious area by either with decks or with um previous pavement or whatever needs to be done with that. Um we're gonna modify the planting plan uh as suggested to um. Uh eliminate some of the green job, giant arbiteries to, and incorporate some native uh evergreen material.
Diversity, yeah.
Diversity in that we gonna have, the, the project will be dark sky compliant, um and the lighting will, you know, achieve um zero cutoff.
Minimize light pollution.
Second? Ted, all in favor? Aye?
I'm gonna withstand.
Thank you very much, folks, I appreciate your time.
Thank you, good luck.
Staff was very instrumental in getting this to where we are.
Thank you.
Thank you.
You're the best. Did you say that you? Okay, so just for the record, Peter is abstaining from that vote, but the vote still passed.
Without a second, Ted?
Yeah, um I just wanted to also compliment staff and Nicole, I think, is that the first report she's written?
Yeah.
But it was very well.
Yeah, very good.
Okay, for the record, I just realized that I made an error, um we needed Diane to uh to have a forum, we needed Diane to act as an alternate in that boat as well. Diane, had you reviewed all of the notes regarding this application ahead of time? Okay, and just to go backwards for one moment, do you vote in favor of this application or not?
Yes, you do.
Okay, so, so moved and the uh application is first. Okay, and if you could act. Uh and just blame my eyesight on that. Okay, uh number six, applications for receipt. WP twenty-five dash zero one two three, review fifty-four Timothy Street, map one forty-one, parcel two ten. Construction of a new two and a half story single family dwelling with front porch and roof patio and associated site work within a regulated area. Last day for public hearing or decision is November seventh, two thousand twenty-five, last regular meeting prior is November fifth, two thousand twenty-five. Is there anyone here for, for Zio? Is there anyone online for Prizio? Alright, moving on.
Um we're gonna schedule the uh.
Yeah.
Well, these will, it'll just have to be pushed at the next meeting.
Table, right?
Yeah.
Well, yeah, the only reason I'm saying is that because there's so many that we might wanna. Schedule the first three for the September and the bottom two for the October.
Well, right.
We discussed that later in the agenda.
Yeah.
Okay.
And this is staff recommends table and you, legal notice and departmental review.
We didn't think of public hearings.
It's necessary, okay, great. WP twenty-five zero one three two, WMC Engineers Brookside Drive Bridge in the vicinity of four fifty-two Brookside Drive. Adjacent to map one twenty-three, parcel two twenty-one, replacement of the Brookside Drive Bridge number zero three six seven. Uh zero three six nine seven over Mill River. Last day for public hearing or decision is November seventh, two thousand twenty-five, last regular prior, meeting prior is November fifth, two thousand twenty-five. Staff recommends scheduling public hearing for October eighth or November fifth. Day. Uh we have one, two, three, four. We have four.
By total to recent.
Five total, so.
Four for public hearing.
Do we wanna split these up, we went two, two and three. To October eighth. And we'll do.
November.
I think that would be a good idea, yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, three in November, so let's do.
Well, two of them go together.
The bridges, yeah, the bridge.
Right, so I was just gonna say, let's do two and three together on October eighth. And we'll do one, four and five on November fifth.
Yeah, one's not recommending a public hearing.
Uh, oh, right. Alright, great. Alright, so. Uh number three is WP twenty-five zero one three five, WMC Engineers Congress Street Bridge in the vicinity of five thirty-seven Congress Street. Adjacent to map fifty-one, parcel forty-seven, replacement of the Congress Street Bridge number. Zero four one nine six over Mill River, last day for public hearing or decision is November seventh, two thousand twenty-five, last regular meeting prior is November fifth, two thousand twenty-five. This public hearing will occur on October eighth, two thousand twenty-five. Number four, WP twenty-five zero one four zero, Stofa Homes, five ninety Sturgis LLC, five ninety Sturgis Highway, map two forty-seven, parcel twenty-six. Construction of a new single family residence with in-ground pool, patios and cabana and associated site work within a regulated area. Last day for public hearing or decision is November seventh, two thousand twenty-five, last regular meeting prior is. November fifth, two thousand twenty-five, and this public hearing will be scheduled on November fifth, two thousand twenty-five. Number five, WP twenty-five dash zero one four two, Shloman, one one six nine, Sasko Hill Road, map two thirty-nine, parcel seven E. Construction of a new single family residence with in-ground pool and patios and associated site work within a regulated area. Last day for public hearing or decision is November seventh, two thousand twenty-five, last regular meeting prior is November fifth, two thousand twenty-five, and this public hearing has been scheduled. For November fif, November fifth, two thousand twenty-five. Number seven, applications for discussion. Oh, sorry.
Proceed.
Sorry, yeah, um. And so I have a motion to approve the public hearings.
I'll make a motion to uh receive the app, five applications under section six.
Does he have to state the date that three one?
No, just as long as the agency receives them.
That's your thinking. So.
Oh. Okay, um and all, always do it, do it all in favor, all in favor, aye? Eight, fee waiver requests. You have any? Nope. Nine, bills and bond releases, IWPA two thousand twelve dash thirteen dash eleven, MTW Properties LLC, six hundred and five sixty-two, Boyd and Blaine. Subdivision construction with a, within a regulated area, request of Walter Stapleton for final bond release of eighteen thousand eight hundred dollars. Twelve thousand of the original thirty thousand eight hundred bond was released in December two thousand and twenty-four, staff recommends final bond release of eighteen thousand eight hundred dollars. I have a motion to, one, Ted?
Move that we lease the uh final bond of eighteen eight.
Second? Okay, all in favor? Okay, all in favor? Okay, ten, legal enforcement actions. One, show cause hearing, Lynn Jing, two thirty six Woodside Circle, map thirty one lot one ninety nine. Issuing corrective action order due to inactivity since the previous correct action order was upheld at the November sixth, two thousand twenty four meeting. See anyone here? Is there anyone online for this? Item? I'm sorry. What number one covers? Yeah, we just acknowledged that, thank you.
What's the story with this, Tim? Have you already issued a show clause?
Yes, this is, if everyone recalls, uh, two thirty six Woodside Circles illegal activity, uh, in year of two thousand. So we're in year twenty five now, um, um, this order was issued, uh, November twenty four. Um, I've had a few conversations with, uh, one or two over the last almost a year now. Um, with, uh, with an engineer, this was, um, a transaction where the, uh. Brother of the now deceased property owner, um, sold the property with, uh, the lingering. Um, enforcement action from four owner, four owners ago. Um, so that the hot potato keeps getting passed, uh, there's no action, there's no response from, um. Mister and Mrs. Lynn and Jing. Um, so my recommendation tonight would be to, um, refer to town attorney for legal action.
Yeah, that's that's appropriate. Thank you. Do you need a motion on that?
Yes, please.
Make a motion that we were, uh, lynching two thirty six Woodside Circle, the town, uh, the town attorney for appropriate, um, enforcement action.
Second, Ted, all in favor?
Aye.
Or also just point out, um, that contractor came to the department window, uh, maybe two weeks ago. Um, who was retained to propose work in. Um, Brewster River to remove this wall. He knew better, came and said, what's going on, and he backed out, so.
Nice.
Without any approval, this, you know, this could happen again, so I think legal action is appropriate to, uh.
That seems very odd because I remember those people coming in and they seemed very cooperative.
Right.
So you haven't heard from them at all?
None, zero correspondence, obviously, zero response to. The written, uh, the written action, the most recent written action to be here tonight. I have no other, no further details other than, uh, I think. Phil, uh, attorney peers can maybe get something moving.
Cool.
Okay, uh, number two. An update on the citation for signature pools, five eighty seven, show, uh, plane map one fifty six lot nine, conducting regulated activity. In ground installation in a regulated area without.
Uh, update, this is, uh, one, that was, uh, second update, I think, at the last meeting, um. No response from signature pools. I think there, the clock is up. Any day, if it, if it already hasn't passed any day, um, we have not received any, uh, any payment. Or or contact, so.
They building the pool?
This was a violation, um. With, uh, for work. Without a formal issued permit.
Right, but are they still building it? Are they stopped work?
It was almost built when we issued the citation, so.
They stopped work?
They did at the time. They do have a valid permit now, but not at the time.
They have a permit, so, but we're, we're just client collecting fee or whatever.
Yes, it's a thousand dollar. Yes.
So can I make a motion that we hold up this, uh, pending resolution of the, of the violation?
Yeah, absolutely, and and they also, um, passed the point of appeal of the citation.
Yeah, so.
Either way, they.
We, we have, we have the stick and and the carrot, so let's do it, that's.
Everybody second? Table second, all in favor?
Thank you for bringing that up.
Yeah, Jay, I think that's a.
Right, number three, an update on citation to muddy puddle LLC through seventy three cross highway map one seventy lot thirty six, conducting a significant. Activity of filling in inland wetlands in a regulated area without a permit.
So if the agency recalls, this dates back to the original N O V in January. Um, a, uh, corrective action order in March, uh, attorney Russo appeared on behalf of the. The property owner in April at the April second meeting. Um, nothing has happened since, we're now in September, no correspondence has, uh, occurred. Um, the citation was, uh, issued at the amount of two hundred dollars a day. Uh, today is actually day forty, so the bill is up to eight thousand dollars. Um, I did, um, send the citation to. Um, Mr. Taylor. Uh, via email out of courtesy saying, hey, you, you know, this went in the mail to you. Um, he denied any wrongdoing. Um. Attorney Pierce is aware of, uh, of this current status. Uh, Mr. Taylor also, uh, emailed correspondence that, uh, that was not retained to represent him. Uh, that our August second hearing, which I'm not aware of any attorneys that do. So, uh, I guess my, um. My recommendation would also be to refer this to.
Yeah.
Attorney Pierce for legal action and, um, you know, this, this, uh. Also should point out on the record that the, um, filling has continued since the January. Um, the initial January violation, uh, when I was out there, middle of June sixteenth. Um, there was new material that was posited in the, in the same area, so.
Uh, yeah.
I remember, I was very. As. I tend to use to, I wouldn't vote in support of that. A year ago because I felt that even though I complied with everything we asked. He said a few comments that I knew you were gonna be back here. I mean, I remember when he agreed to some of the conditions, I know that Jay sat down, he said, oh, okay, I'll agree to that, so my kids won't have a front yard.
But you know what? This is not that property.
But I think it's very revealing in terms of the attitude.
We gotta be careful though, what we say in terms of not, not.
What, do we know what they're do, plan to do with that property in the future?
No, it's adjacent to our, um, Banger Woods Open.
Uh, yeah, I know.
Have you checked their website and see if one of their, um, services is filling wetlands?
Well, it's, it's, uh, coincidentally across the driveway. Um, entrance to the, the new home.
Right.
Development site, uh, we have aerial flowers every six months, so you could see the progression. Um, Mr. Taylor did FOIA town hall, um, for the pictures. Um, that I have taken personally from my phone as well as the aerials, um, and he also FOIA'd, uh, Nicole's, um, resume.
Interesting.
So he knows about it.
He's preparing.
But, you, you know, the clock's still ticking, so.
Let's just get this, I, I'll make the motion to get this, uh, town attorney.
Wait, wait, Diane wants to make.
So, I, I mentioned to you previously that. Transfer this property into another LLC. And I don't know what his involvement is in that, in that LLC. He's not the principal. I think the principal is a relative, his wife.
The three seventy three property?
Yeah. So, yeah, the new entity is Bubble Holdings LLC. So I'm wondering if you need to send a notice that you're ending. Now, I mean, he's not the owner anymore. Uh, I, I don't know what the legality of that is, but.
This is a similar game with one twenty Wickman where the, you know, the LLC changed and.
Yeah.
Because they're try, they're probably trying to make a case that you can't charge them all those four, you know, whatever it was, forty days.
Yeah.
Because now it's under new.
Yeah, well, like, like the motion, you know.
Okay, so Jay wants to make a motion.
Yeah, I think we, uh, it's very obvious that this needs to be handled on, on by, uh, attorney. Obviously, there's a lot of things going on here, so let's get, uh, the professional attorney involved. Be aggressive, right?
Diane, do you second?
Yes.
And all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
The game is afoot.
Speaking of, number four, update on Norwood.
Should we defer that to the executive session?
We are not gonna do executive session tonight.
Town attorney wasn't, wasn't fully ready.
Okay.
Um, so exec won't occur, so in that being said, um, I have met with, uh, as far as this update, I have met with. Um, our town's attorney, um. Yeah, one of their consultants, uh, representing Miss Norwood and as well as, uh, her attorney, Steve Walco. Um, onsite, we had some discussions, uh, we did, um, discuss, um, planting plans and various. Um, site plans, um. There was a meeting with Judge, uh, Judge Radcliffe, um, so that's all gonna get discussed in exec, but. Things are still happening as of the last two weeks, um, so I'll, uh, I'll leave it at that and. And let attorney Peters, um, give you further details.
Are we?
In exec, I'm look, looking at scheduling that, um, after the next commission meeting.
October eighth, yeah.
Um, no, sorry.
Oh, sorry.
Uh, September, s- was seventeenth? Yes.
And so it's, well, this is both a, uh, conservation easement thing and a. What they're, but.
Yeah, we'll do, uh, in, in exec for wellens.
Alright.
Great. Number five, miscellaneous notices and violations, three forty one Nano Pod. Did I pronounce that correctly? It's a nano pod.
Pretty good.
I thought if it was nano pogue, it'd be cheat. Nano pod. Anyway.
Part of the French accent.
Um. Nano pogue.
Yes, uh, N O V was issued August twentieth, uh, to patch a new packet. Um, there was, uh, some earthwork done with, with burn trying to defer water on a single family residential property. Um, with regulated area of inland wetlands and watercourses. Um. The, I have not received any response, uh.
Conservation, and that they just returned from an extended trip. I'm needing to get the documents they needed.
Okay, so I stand corrected for the record, they have reached out, acceptance. And also we'll work with them on that, it's not, um, as significant as some of the others on the agenda. Will, uh, come to a resolution with them, but they have made contact.
Great, lovely, okay. Eleven, staff report, reports from the conservation department. P W C permit applications received twelve as of August twenty second. Notice violations issued one as of August twenty second, citations issued zero, bone release six. Thoughts?
Um, no, Sarah's doing a good job keeping up with the volume, it's quite a bit in a short amount of time.
The August was double up with last year for August.
Alright, sight walks for August, fifty four Timothy Street. Brookside Drive Bridge, Congress Street Bridge, five ninety Sturgis Highway, eleven sixty nine Sasko.
Fight hike.
Does the agency wanna do all that in one night or break it up?
Don't really have any more nights left.
Where is Timothy Street?
Right near, uh. The commissioner's house at this table. Um, close to ninety five. And, uh, North Benson.
So. Probably makes sense to do. We could do them all, that's a lot, though. You wanna split them up into two and do.
Yeah.
Like a Wednesday and a Sunday?
Yeah.
Or.
We could, Congress and Brookside.
Do some on your own.
It would make sense to do Brookside and Congress together. Uh, and maybe even Sturgis. And then do you wanna do Timothy and Sasko Hill on a separate day?
Yeah.
What do you think? Yep. Okay.
Calendars.
Calendars, what are we looking at? I usually do them on my own.
You're gonna start running out of daylight.
I know. Well, now, last year we went to what, Sunday mornings? Yeah, so we can start doing that. How does everybody feel about Sunday morning?
Guys.
Okay. Alright, so how about? Next Sunday morning, the fourteenth. We can do Brookside Drive and Congress. And the following is September twenty first. And what time does everybody feel comfortable with? Nine? It's nine o'clock good for everyone on Sundays?
Get up before ten?
If we do it on a Sunday, can we just do it all in one day?
I would do it eight.
I'm just asking, cuz if it's Sunday and we can just do it all in like an hour. And so we'll be here the next Sunday, so.
Does everybody feel com- I mean, and look, anyone can go.
On their own.
On their own, right.
Right.
The only thing other than I was thinking is, you know, Brookside Drive and Congress Street are public bridges. I mean, we wouldn't, I mean, we could just kinda do those on our. Right, I, I don't know how you feel, right?
That's a good idea.
Okay, that is a good idea.
I'll take some pictures and you can make.
Okay, so how about on the fourteenth at nine AM, we do Timothy, Sturgis and Sasko? And then everybody go on their own to see the bridges. Um.
I know.
Does that sound good? Okay. Twelve other, thank you, Keith.
Well, him actually said it too.
Thank you, Ted, that makes a lot of sense.
Yeah, those are, those are just, um, bridge replacements from the engineering department.
Right.
Same consultant, so he'll be able to present that, um, I think pretty efficiently. Uh, number, uh, three that I just wanted to add on there, under staff, um, that was not on the agenda. Um, was, if some of you heard, uh, the release of the wetland screening tool, um, from the department homepage. Um, the intent was to make, uh, in partnership, partnership with town, um, I T department and Metro Cog. Um, I wanted to develop a, uh, screening tool for just typing an address. G I S that we already have will tell you a simple answer, is a regulated area on the parcel, yes or no? Wetlands, yes, upland review, yes, or no, neither? Um, so that was launched two weeks ago, uh, makes it easier for staff that we don't have to go into the town G I S, click layers and.
Great.
Great for realtors and prospective home buyers.
Title searchers, you know, inquiries we get, the realtors, um, so I've been sharing that, trying to.
Is that a, have no excuse? Load on your, on your staff to, to answer those kinds of calls from realtors and prospective home buyers.
Yeah, we get a lot every day, title searchers, realtors, um. And, yeah, the realtors, it's, sometimes they're, they want very specific answers, like can we do a pool, can we do in addition? But we don't have specific information.
Right.
Um, like size, where's the existing set to like, so I feel like it.
Right.
It does take a lot of time.
Great tool.
That's great, thank you, Ted.
Can you track how much, um, traffic, traffic you're getting or?
Could, I haven't, I haven't yet, but I would need.
I would.
Mary Mouta.
How do you educate people?
Just trying to share it on Instagram, the homepage, my LinkedIn.
Tell people when they call.
Well, and then when they email us asking about it, we can say.
Right.
Here's the tool that you would use.
Don't call us anymore.
Is there a little like?
Take ownership.
Thing you can put at the desk? To let people know, maybe?
You have my realtors?
Yeah, I mean, good.
I mean, dude, how many people come to the department?
A lot less traffic, foot traffic. It's really, um, since the applications went online a couple of years ago, a lot less.
I come and say hello once in a while.
Uh, the, I, I'm working with Metro Cog to get one.
You have to say information. You have to say information, deemed reliable, guaranteed.
Yeah, it's, it's basically, it's, it's not on yet, I have to.
Okay.
I just, I have to add that, we talked, we did talk about that.
Cool.
You know, and then under that is call us.
Right, yeah, if you have any work, call us, right, but you know, it's a bridge cop.
Yeah.
Yeah.
That's um, that's all I had uh under that.
Great, great.
Cool.
Alright, eleven. Other memorandum, four twenty, forty-two twenty-one Black Rock Turnpike.
That was uh in kind of the collaboration with the um. TPZ upstairs from us, um, they received this application as well as one prior that I wrote a similar memo to. Uh, without consulting uh the department uh at all. Um, so without spending too much time and effort, I, it's very significant projects uh with a lot of red flags. So just, I put that on the record uh with a very quick review, what issues I saw. So I just put that out there, I wanted to share with the agency that should that application move forward, we, that, that is a big, a big one.
I think I read that planning is only did not give them a welcome reception.
Yeah, I, I wouldn't be surprised, I mean, there was no, there was no substance, it was very incomplete, huge issues. Were, were obvious to me. I, I'm, hope it doesn't move forward.
Never know what these things, because that went on Black Rock Turnpike, I had issues, it's still got approved.
Thank you, Tim, that's going above and beyond and we appreciate it. Uh, number two, update on the Rooster River litter boom.
Uh, as of today, I submitted a request for purchase order to purchase the item. So I'm, I have to actually submit that uh by. Um, this is, if everyone recalls, just uh on the, on the town and city Bridgeport line. Litter boom that will float in the Rooster River for collection of trash and debris. That was approved by the Water Selectmen Board of Finance and the RTM earlier in the year, uh, April or May. This is also in collaboration with Harbor Watch or um with Nikki Spiller, we had a Zoom today. Um, we have approval from Connecticut DOT to access their property um through a permit. Um, and our next step is to uh collaborate with the city of Bridgeport to find out if they will require an inland wetlands permit. Uh, as well as um. The department will be submitting an application to the agency as a formality to move forward with in-water work to install it, so. Um, that will be the next step and uh it's roughly about three months for the um manufacturer to build. So our, our plan would be to launch it, we uh just at the end of winter. And, and it's, yeah, install it for, for springtime.
And would your crew be monitoring it, maintaining it?
To some extent, yes, um, otherwise, uh, that's roughly ten thousand dollars in the budget is for one year of, of Harbor Watch to do that.
Oh, Harbor, great.
They'll, they'll be the uh, the roots on the ground for monitoring maintenance, trash removal.
That's great.
Uh, figuring out when. You know, the frequent, uh, emptying frequency and based on seasons, stuff like that, so.
Nice. Okay. Our executive session is not happening tonight. So in lieu of that, um, would you like to discuss Plumtree Lane?
Yeah, briefly, um, and item number four that is not on this agenda since this was already published. Um, received correspondence that I circulated with the agency uh as of late yesterday, four, five and fifteen Plumtree Lane. Um, Sarah and I looked at it today and noticed that uh both lots are in both towns of Trumbull and Easton. So some of my correspondence was, hey, we didn't get notified, um, since Fairfield's within the five hundred feet of uh. Proposed um activity. The uh, the town of Easton's uh wetlands compliance officer responded saying. Um, they haven't formally received the application yet because there's a fee, problem with accepting of fees. So we uh will see that um correspondence coming from uh at least Easton and I, I think eventually Trumbull, so I don't think it's um. You know, an emergency hurry up uh to um. Act, but I do believe last night, according to the email from the Fairfield resident was uh Trumbull's inland wetlands agency meeting. I didn't attend, but I'm not sure uh what happened there, so things are happening, but um, you know, I, I would foresee that. Um, the department on behalf of the agency would do some type of review of the application. Um, once it's received and, and published and uh, and generate some comments for the agency's review and then submission. On your behalf, as, as comments, we're down, we'd be downstream uh on the Mill River. From this site, so I think we have um plenty of standing stakeholder uh. Legs uh in, in this one, so.
So waterways don't stop at the town border.
Yeah, they don't. Uh, but Sarah and I, uh, uh, you know, in one point, if anyone's reviewed any of the drawings, um, looking at the site, there's, uh, we measured from. A fifty-foot swath that was uh over one foot, a foot of. Big line, it's hugely steep slopes, it's short amount of space, so uh, you know, I, I could see lots of.
Big, a small piece of land.
Yeah, next to the river.
Finds me of another project vaguely.
All of the water course of the Mill River is on the eastern, uh, Easton. Town side of, of the parcels are basically cut in half. Uh, Trumbull has the eastern side and Easton has the western side. That's um, stay tuned, uh, if I receive anything, I'll pass it along.
Great. Anything else? Alright, we're turned.
Well, I was just gonna say that if anybody is looking at P O C D. Current iteration, it's about, there's about to be another public hearing, uh, much better than the initial one that we took a look at, there's a lot more verbiage about conservation. And protection of um wildlife, still not as much as I would like. But we got most of what we asked for um from MLive, so uh, I consider that of, of real positive.
Great. Awesome, okay. Alright, now we're sure.